Mr. Sanders, Mr. Douthat, Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Nowicki.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Doug Boyer.
Here.
City Planner Armando Oronal.
Yeah.
Thank you. Item number three is public comment. Anyone in the public is allowed to speak for up to three minutes on any item either on the agenda or an item that is not on the agenda if you wish. And I'm sorry, this particular public comment is only for items that are on the agenda. You will have the opportunity, if you're, I see several members here, that are, to speak for three minutes during your agenda item. So you don't need to speak now unless you wish to, but you may. Anyone want to speak? Thank you. Item number four, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to approve the agenda as written. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number five, approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the July 19th Planning Commission meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Announcements and committee reports?
We have no turn of votes.
Thank you. Item number seven, under informational items, is a presentation by the Regional Planning Transportation Plan by Amy Cummins with the Regional Transportation Commission. I think Lee Gibson is going to introduce her. Lee Gibson is the Executive Director of the RTC.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to go through our regional transportation plan effort. I want to remind everyone, you know, most folks think of RTC as either the bus operator or the street and highway constructor, but we're actually a planning organization as well. We're the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Reno-Sparks Organized Area and for Washoe County. That's a very important function because our main job as the NPO is to bring back our tax dollars that we pay into the Highway Trust Fund and into the general revenue accounts back for transportation investments. If any of you had the opportunity to go out to the 580 grand opening today, that's an excellent example of a major roadway where we brought back substantial monies from the Highway Trust Fund to help build a regional facility that I think in the long term hopefully will bring us some economic development opportunities. Tonight's presentation by Amy is going to bring you up to speed on that planning process. We'll probably be back with, to you later in the fall with some more concrete recommendations. An emphasis tonight we do have is on public transportation. We do, we've had a lot of feedback, as you'll see tonight, on public transportation needs, and we're going to be talking with you with the City of Sparks about how those needs can be met. Indeed, I may be a little premature, but indeed, I think we're going to have a major transit summit later in the fall, maybe early winter, to talk about how the region can address some of these opportunities and address some of the shortfalls. But with that, let me turn it over to Amy and her able assistant in the back, Ella, to go through this presentation, and then we'll be happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. I'm Amy Cummings, Director of Planning at RTC, and I'm very happy to be able to talk to you about our regional transportation plan. This is a document that we update every four years, and it identifies the long-range 20-year vision and infrastructure investments that we anticipate to make in our region. And one of the things we're trying to emphasize in this particular cycle is linking land use and transportation planning initiatives. And I want to thank Armando and many of the other Sparks planning staff who have been through many of RTP meetings throughout this process, and we really appreciate their support. In terms of the process, we started out by having an outreach effort to identify the goals and guiding principles for the plan. The next phase that we're wrapping up right now is going out to the community and asking people for their ideas on projects that they would like us to look at. And we have about another month before we complete our new travel demand model, which is going to include the latest 2035 consensus forecast that the TMRPA has developed with the county and the jurisdictions. And then we'll start the analysis, the technical analysis of all the projects that have been suggested. So we hope to, around the November timeframe, have a draft plan, and we'll certainly be back in touch with more of those details. This highlights the guiding principles that were identified through our public process, and that's to emphasize safe and healthy communities, economic development, sustainability, and increased travel choices. We're also working closely with the Health District and the Safe Routes to School program to look at ways we can make our regional, because we do have a lot of schools on regional roads in particular. We have some here on Prater Way, just down the street. So we're working with them to identify projects to make it easier for kids to walk and bike to school. Complete streets is another important component of what we do, and safety, again, is the cornerstone here. We found that in places where we've done complete streets improvements, here at Victorian Avenue is one example, Mayberry and Arlington are some other examples you may be familiar with, we've reduced crashes by 30 to 40 percent in areas where those improvements have been made. And as we've been out talking to the community, the primary thing we've been hearing is not the need for new roads, but the need for enhanced access and transit connectivity, especially in the outlying suburban neighborhoods, where people are there telling us that they feel very isolated and don't have the level of transportation options that they would like. So we're looking at some different scenarios for circulator services in some of those outlying neighborhoods. And we've gotten some specific requests for new routes, Pyramid Way, along the McCarran Loop, and some others. So we'll be looking at developing cost estimates and ridership forecasts for those types of new services, and we'll be taking that back to the public in the next couple of months for review. We've also asked folks what their vision would be for the Rapid, our Bus Rapid Transit Service, which has been very successful on Virginia Street. And the main thing we've been hearing from folks is to extend that up to UNR and on Virginia Street, and also down to TMCC at the southern end of the Virginia Street corridor, but also east from Fourth Street Station to the Legends Shopping Center. So-
Amy, real quick, it says expansion to UNR underway. What-
That's something that we have funding to do in the next year, and we're developing, or we're just starting a study to identify where those bus stop locations would be, but to go from Fourth Street Station up to UNR.
Oh, okay.
And that's something we hope to have operating within the next year.
We already carry, we already carry a substantial number of folks from Fourth Street Station up to UNR. This is just going to, one, give them a faster and more economical service, faster for the customer, more economical for us. And then the station will give us a better place to sort of drop those people off. Hopefully, they'll be, it'll be centrally located relative to the campus, and help get the students and the faculty to where they want to go in a more efficient, effective manner. By us being able to cycle those buses faster, that puts money back into our bank account, and that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And I mentioned our alternatives development process. We've been going and talking to community groups. We've had a big public outreach effort that was at the Sparks Heritage Museum a couple months ago. And we also have a smartphone app where we're inviting people to go and send us their suggestions. Just search for Washoe RTP on your smartphone, and also on the website at yourwashoeRTP.com. And again, I wanted to emphasize our partnership with TMRPA. They have updated the population employment forecast, so we have the best available data in our travel demand model that incorporates all of the jurisdictions, planned land use, and zoning. So do you have any questions for us? Thank you very much.
Let's get through the population. We're seeing somewhat of a little bit of a slowdown, but long-term, could you kind of go through that?
Absolutely. When you compare the forecast going forward now, it's only about 30,000 people less than the forecast that was done four years ago. So there could be a slight fall-off in the travel demand model congestion levels, but the preliminary data we're getting back by 2035, there's still going to be substantial traffic congestions on our, you know, on McCarran, Pyramid, all of those major projects that are in the works now for Southeast Connector and the Pyramid 395 Connector are still very much going to be needed.
Right.
Even with the lower population.
Even with, and you know, I looked through the whole Todd and the concept and the Rapid, and that's great, and we need that, but I see always in the Todd, there's little pushes of showing, going up, like you say, going up Sparks Boulevard, Vista, Pyramid. From a Sparks standpoint, we really do need some mass transit in those areas, I feel.
That echoes a lot of what we've been hearing from the community, is that they want more transit connectivity, and in particular Pyramid, the Pyramid Corridor.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may add, we're hearing that from our elected leadership. We're hearing that from county representatives who represent the North Valleys, county representatives who represent Sparks. And we're clearly seeing that as we go forward in this plan, the question and issue of providing enhanced public transportation to Sparks is going to be something this plan's going to have to address.
Any other questions?
Um, yeah. If I could ask another, maybe some status and some of the larger projects. Could you ask?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. We're moving forward with all of our major projects. The Southeast Connector, that actually is now under final design, and we're working with the Corps of Engineers. We're actually may make some modifications to how the permit is structured and be able to advance construction sooner as opposed to later. We have an RFP out right now, final design for the Pyramid-McCarren intersection will be underway shortly. That means we are going to be preparing construction documents and buying right-of-way. We're already in the process today of doing hardship right-of-way acquisitions. I believe we have six homeowners we're talking with now and working the paperwork through. We actually did something, and I want to take a moment and compliment the Nevada Department of Transportation, the Federal Highway Administration. Nothing ever done north or south in this state has been the permission or the cooperation of the RTC, NDOT, and FHWA to come forward and get an advanced right-of-way acquisition program before final design's completed. It's never been done in this state. We're doing it for Pyramid-McCarren. And that means we're going to be able to help move some of those folks who, they could have a job opportunity in another state or another part of the state, or just they're ready to move, but for whatever reason, they can't get out. We're going to get them out of there. We're going to make them whole. So we're very happy that that's moving forward. We have a draft environmental impact statement in for the 395 Connector. That's the road that follows Disk Drive over from Pyramid Highway to the 395 Freeway. Again, a great reliever for the McCarran Corridor, a great new opportunity, a great new link for Sparks. We're going to get that hopefully in right-of-way acquisition in 2014, 2015. So Southeast Connector, Pyramid-McCarren, 395 Connector, 395 widening is also another one that we'll be working on. And interestingly enough, with the new Apple facility that will be going in, we're looking at some bicycle and pedestrian improvements along the I-80 corridor to help maybe connect that, give those folks an alternative to using the automobile to get to work. So those are major projects that are in our tip. They're moving forward. They will be carried forward into this regional transportation plan, and the future population projections, you know, showing full, full need for those facilities as they were defined earlier in the planning process. So-
That's great, because both of those projects, Pyramid and both the Connector, so important to Sparks and to our city.
Lee, when you talked about the right-of-way acquisitions on Pyramid and McCarron there, are we talking the west and the east side, or?
If I get my directions correct, we're talking about the northeast quadrant and the southeast quadrant where the residential homes are. Because the, we can bring back a status report on that if you'd like. The design is mostly going to the east. So the businesses, the church are all being left whole. We don't want to, we don't want to interrupt the access to the church. We certainly don't want to do anything to jeopardize the jobs in the commercial centers in the southwest quadrant. So we're going to move it to the east. And that's going to get better, it also gives some better design concepts for us to get the left turns in.
Right.
Any other questions? Amy, did you have?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, a special shout-out to Vice Chairman Spurber. He serves on our Regional Road Impact Fee Advisory Committee. When Amy talked about linking transportation and land use together, that, that group and the administration in cooperation with your planners and your Public Works Department are really helping set the stage for linking transportation and land use. I think you're going to be hearing more about the impact fee program and how we perhaps can expand it and improve it and make it something that will be a tool to help us going forward realize a enhanced land use pattern and transportation connections that will support economic development. So thanks, Art. We appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
I see a lot of this about bicycles and touring bike lanes, different things. A lot of cities have formal bike share programs. Are we looking into anything like that?
Yes. I am very excited to say, in our last modification to our Transportation Improvement Program, we're going to have a pilot project for bike share in Sparks. So we'll have two locations to start with, and John Erickson has taken the lead on this. There would be one set of bike racks at the Sparks Marina and one at Centennial Plaza. So it's something we hope will be useful for commuters to, you know, really affect that mode share of giving people an option of riding a bike instead of driving. And it's something that can be expanded. Certainly, it's very scalable, and we're starting with just two locations, but hope that that's a program that would be successful and grow.
Thank you. I just have one kind of final, maybe final question. One of the things we're going to be discussing a little later on tonight is the possibility of changes in the TOD areas in Sparks, and I know Reno is looking at some changes as well. Are you involved in that, and do you have thoughts on those kinds of things, either for Sparks or Reno?
Absolutely. And we have been participating with regional planning, and we're happy to talk to you and come back and, you know, deal more specifically with transit operational issues if you have an interest in that. TOD is very important to have supportive land uses for transit service. I know our challenge here is we don't have the level of transit that we would like to have in the TOD corridor. But if you have supportive land use, it doesn't just help transit ridership, it helps make it a more walkable, vibrant community, just from the ground level. So that would certainly help transit in the future, and we hope to expand that service, in particular, on the Prater Corridor. As we identified in our Fourth Prater Corridor study, the initial leg might be a Fourth Street Station to Centennial Plaza, rapid route, and then, as you saw in the vision plan, hopefully an extension out to Legends at some point in the future.
One of the, you gave a presentation to the Regional Planning Commission a few weeks ago, and you had some additional data that you presented. And one of them was a study that you were doing on ridership and some of the issues that, where your riders were coming from, and particularly in some of the areas we're talking about on the TOD corridor. Have you gotten anywhere on that?
Well, I know region-wide, about 65% of our total boardings happen in the regional centers in the TODs. And we do have the split, I can't remember specifically what it was in Sparks, but we do have those numbers and can bring that back to you at a future meeting or get it-
Yeah, I think I asked that night on the regional planning, because I was concerned about, that's interesting information, but it's, it would be more interesting if we knew that ridership and where it's coming from in the various TOD sections in Sparks, or in Reno for that matter.
Yes.
And so I'm hopeful that that's something you'll be providing later on to the regional.
I have a table that perhaps I could email to you and you could distribute.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, thanks very much for the presentation.
Okay, thank you very much.
I guess we're not going to hear from your lovely little assistant.
She was quiet, so that was perfect for her.
See you, Lee. Thank you.
All right, we move on to the public hearing items tonight, starting with item number eight, PCN 12021, Horizon Christian Church.
Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commission. I'm Karen Melby, Senior Planner. I'm waiting for the dog to come. Before you today is a special use permit to allow Horizon Christian Church to be located on these two parcels. They're both one-acre parcels. This is Prater, and this would be Vista. They are proposing to remodel the existing credit union building into offices and a temporary sanctuary, which would seat about 130 people. This property was issued a special use permit in 1994, and in 1995, the credit union building was built. They have occupied that building until, I don't know, I couldn't quite find that in our records. But it's been occupied for a while. It's a 4,600 square foot building that they want to remodel into the church. They anticipate building a sanctuary on the vacant parcel in the near future. So the special use permit is including both parcels and the future sanctuary. Right, in the interim right now, they, with 130 seats, they require 43 parking spaces, and the office would require 10 parking spaces for a total of 53 parking spaces. The property has 31 parking spaces on it right now. So they have actually presented with, to me tonight, documents on the three parcels to the west here. They are anticipating to park on that southern parcel, and I received the letters tonight authorizing them to have that interim parking until they get their sanctuary built. The other issue that staff had with this is the vacant parcel. We were concerned that they'd be, people would be driving across that parcel or parking on that. So we've added some conditions to address that until they build and pave that lot and put the improvements on it. Staff's recommending approval with 10, bleh, I'm sorry, 10 conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Karen?
Mr. Chair, I have one. Karen, I didn't ask at Tuesday's meeting, but is that going to remain a ride-in, ride-out, or is there going to be access to go left out of that? Are they going to do a cut through the median, or is it going to stay a ride-in, ride-out?
It would be, in talking to John Erickson, the traffic engineer, we are going to look at that when we have the sanctuary coming in, the new sanctuary building, but it looks like it'll remain, we may move the median cut to the west, from where it is now, but it would still be only a left-in from the, going westbound, but it would not be a left-out. It would still be in, a ride-in, ride-out from eastbound on Prater.
Thanks. Thank you. Other questions? Any other questions? If not, is the applicant here?
Eager.
Thank you. I'm excited. Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, we're excited. We have a number of our leadership team that's here tonight, and we've been meeting in the Reed High School, watching this church grow over the last few years. We're excited that this will be our first purchase of a building that we're going to use not only now, but in the future. We're excited about building the new sanctuary next door, and that will happen fairly soon. And so thank you for your time and consideration of this, but this is a big day for Horizon Christian Church. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So again, you got some agreements to be able to utilize some of that parking, so that all worked out very well, and-
There's, I mean, the requirement was to have the 53. We have 31 on our side. We have room to add on that. Plus, we have 50 now next door, so we have more than enough to meet the needs.
Great. And again, your hours will be somewhat different if-
For the most part, it's Sunday morning. And then we have our offices during the week. There might be four or five, and then some evening meetings once in a while. So it'll actually work out really well with our neighbors next door.
Great. Okay, any other questions?
Did I read somewhere about adult daycare? I missed the meeting on Tuesday. I'm sorry.
Adult daycare?
Broke my foot. Yeah. I thought I read somewhere.
I haven't added that one yet.
Okay. I must have been-
Don't know anything about that one. Maybe it's for me. I don't know.
The adult daycare, that's the parking that they're going to use. They're going to-
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I can't. The adult daycare facilities parking on Sunday mornings.
Okay. Yeah. And it's anticipated that that parking lot would only be used on Sundays for their church services. It wouldn't be, they've got an adequate number of parking spaces on the site to, for any night meetings or functions during the day. Great.
Maybe it's for me.
This is, thank you. This is a public hearing item. Anyone in the public would like to come forward and speak for up to three minutes on this issue. Well, you all look like you're positive about it, but don't want to speak, which is, you want?
I'm happy to sound National Horizon Christian Church. We just want to thank you for all your work for our community. Thank you for all the time you put in. You know, this involves a lot of things, listening to people and just having everything else. We're just glad we worked with you and made you great neighbors. And we, thank you for all the things you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
God bless you.
If there is no one else, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the special use permit associated with PCN 12021, adopting findings S1 through S6, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to conditions of approval 1 through 10 as listed in the staff report.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve PCN 12021. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Good luck with it all. The next item on the agenda is item number nine, PCN 12023, CrossFit Sparks Elite.
Good evening, Planning Commission members and council. For the record, I'm Don Morehouse with the Community Services Department. The case before you is that of PCN 12023. It's a special use permit to allow for a small group fitness recreational facility. The parcel is located at 625 Spice Island Drive, Suite B, and resides within the industrial zoning district. The 3.2 acre parcel located at 625 Spice Island Drive includes four warehouse buildings currently housing industrial uses. The applicant is proposing to use Suite B, a 1,900 square foot section of a 12,000 square foot warehouse building on the south side of the parcel, as CrossFit Sparks Elite, a small group fitness recreational facility. Put up an overhead here and point you in the right direction. It's basically this portion of this southern building on the parcel. So there are 10 parking spaces required for 1,900 square feet of this particular use, and these spaces are available on the parcel. And staff would also like to note that no members of this CrossFit facility will be under the age of 18. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Don?
I have one. John, did you go out there Tuesday?
This past Tuesday?
Yeah, after our meeting?
I did not.
Okay.
Yeah, I went out the previous week.
And they were open?
Yes, the previous week, unfortunately, they were open. Yeah, they seemed, they seemed to be operating.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Don? Is the applicant here? Want to come right on up? Just give us your name and-
Scott Peterson.
Okay.
Yes.
Tell us what you'd like to tell us.
Well, just basically, the way this all started, I've been doing, I don't know if any of you've heard of CrossFit or not, but it's a particular style of just small functional fitness, almost like personal training classes, small groups, five, six, eight. And I've been doing it for years, and it's just a passion of mine. So the way this all started was a group of friends who we all worked out together. We just basically wanted a place to go work out on our own. That's what we did. So we started, we rented this warehouse. Basically, we all went together. We bought our own equipment, just did this all on our own, just to have our own place to work out. Due to the popularity and word getting around, friends hearing about it, we decided that we would like to turn it into a business. And so that's how it all began. So that's why we're asking for the special use permit to try to turn it into a full-fledged business where we're at there.
Scott, do you have any issues with any of the conditions that are?
No.
I did go out there Tuesday, and there seems to be, I went, there Tuesday at approximately about 1:30, and then again at- About 5:30 to look at the property, and both times, it seemed like you guys were
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're, like I said, we've, word of mouth has gotten out. We've got friends there, and there's probably about 20 of us, 25 of us that are together right now. And so, you know, technically, we're, I mean, we're doing workouts in there, in the facility.
Are you charging either fees or?
We're all just helping pay the rent right now.
I guess the question, you know, concerns some of us is that-
Everybody is contributing to the gym, yes.
Yeah. If you don't have your special use permit yet, you also don't have your business license yet.
Correct.
And you're open and operating.
No, I understand that. I know we're walking the fine line right now, so. I, I know we're walking the fine line right now, so.
Yes.
If I may, as the applicant, we need, I need to remind you that you can't not, you cannot be operating in that location at all until the, not only, after the Planning Commission has taken action, but all of the conditions of the special use permit have been satisfied and the special use permit actually issued.
Okay.
So...
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Okay. This is also a public hearing item. Anyone in the public would like to come forward and speak for three minutes on this topic? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Planning Commission. Any other questions or discussion here, or questions for Don?
I have a question, Mr. Chair. So if the, if this is approved tonight, is it effective right away?
No, if I may.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson, the answer to your question is, is it is not effective until all of the conditions of the special use permit have been satisfied. For example, condition number four requires that a building code study be completed, and then the, you know, the requirement or the, the recommendations of the building code study have to be implemented. And only at that time, after all the conditions are satisfied, would the city actually issue the special use permit.
Okay.
There's an actual permit, but it can only be issued by the city after all the conditions have been satisfied. And only after that permit has been, in fact, issued, can the business legally operate in that location.
Okay. Mr. Peterson, you understand that?
Yeah.
Oh, and by the way, we're not related.
No.
We kind of look alike, but we're not related.
No. Is, is it possible, is it possible to get a special use permit contingent upon that?
You better come back up, maybe.
Is it possible to get approval for a special use permit contingent upon that one? Is that the only requirement left? As far as I know, I know that this is the third, third meeting in the stage that we've fulfilled the requirements. Is that the only missing requirement up to...
I, I don't know whether it's the only missing requirement. We'd have to confer with the other, the other divisions of the, of the city that are involved in the approval process.
Okay, so...
And Mr. Peterson, I guess I would just like to say from the Planning Commission, other folks may speak if they want, but you're having a few people there helping to pay the overhead and working out together, probably is not causing a crisis in our life in, in the city of Sparks. But for a business to open without the proper approvals might cause a problem, and so if we let you, we have to let anyone else who wants to...
I could put, I understand. Yeah, I'm not our... Not a problem. So, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I know this is the third meeting in the stage of this that we've, that we've had up till now in the special use permit process. So from here, then, I, I know, I've, I've known about the, the code analysis or whatever it is that this engineer needs to, to sign off on, and we're in the process of getting that done. Where does that leave us now then, in the next stage, I mean?
Chairman Bowles, may I?
Yes, absolutely.
To reiterate my answer, or repeat my answer essentially, it's after the building code analysis has been done, the condition, the, the, if it requires, for example, or recommends, you know, certain improvements or modifications to the building be done, those in fact, those buildings are, those improvements or modifications in fact have to be done before, you know, the, the appropriate division of the city will sign off. In that case, it would be the building official.
Okay, no, I understand that, but I'm...
And so the, so it, to repeat, you can't operate the business legally until the permit has been issued, and the permit can't be issued until all the conditions have been satisfied.
That's not a problem. But what I, I guess my question again is, so, for example, if I get a code analysis finished by whatever midweek next week, I turn that in, I mean, do I have to wait for another, is, am I cycled through for the next planning meeting, or is there...
There wouldn't be another planning meeting. If the, if the special use permit is, is essentially approved by the Planning Commission, then any of the conditions have to be satisfied before, before the permit can be issued.
Okay, so that'll be an approval? I mean, pending approval tonight or denial?
It would be an approval, it's a conditional approval.
Okay. And then all I have to do is, is meet that condition?
Meet the condition.
Meet that last condition, okay.
So if the, if the Planning Commission approves your application, does it satisfy all the conditions? And then the actual...
Permit will issue administratively. There will be no more public meetings unless there's an appeal.
Okay.
Under the, under the city's appeal code.
Okay, so once, once that code analysis is finished, or then I just, I just return it here to the...
You would return it, you'd return it to the building division.
Okay.
And I know there's also a fire, fire department complying with all the requirements of the fire department prior to getting a business license.
Okay, I know the fire department is down.
None of those are hoops that, that will involve the Planning Commission, but they are things that need to be done before you're doing business.
Okay. I know the fire department has been out and inspected, and that's, as far as I knew, that was finished. Do you not have that?
That may be.
Okay.
That's one of the conditions.
Okay.
We're not, I'm not suggesting it isn't done.
Okay.
I'm just suggesting it's one of the things that needs to be done.
As Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Thurling has said, the, the actual sign off by all of, of all the conditions is an administrative function. So it would be the fire department, it would be the building division, it would be planning, et cetera.
Okay.
And those sign offs are administrative, and only after all of those sign offs that have, have occurred can the permit be issued.
No, I understand.
And at that point, can you legally operate.
And then, and then in any event, assuming the best case scenario for you, let's say you get everything done tomorrow, and you have a really good construction crew, and you are done by Sunday, and you're in here Monday, and you're ready for the administrative issuance of the permit, you're still out twenty-one days from tonight if they approve it, because that's the appeal period. It won't issue within the appeal period.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Thank you.
So, okay.
All right, we are back at the Planning Commission level. Any more questions for staff or Don?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you're ready for a motion?
I am.
I move to approve the special use permit associated with PCN 12023, adopting findings S1 through S6, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 6 as listed in the staff report.
Do I hear a second? Let's bring it back to the level for discussion.
Do we need a second for discussion?
We need it. Since we have, since we have not had a second to the motion, we're still in Planning Commission general discussions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve PCN 12023. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the fact that Mr. Peterson wants to open up his business here in, in City of Sparks. I just want to make sure that, that he understands that we don't want him to jeopardize that process by continuing to operate. I'll be voting in favor of this, but I want to make sure that he doesn't do anything until he gets his permit.
Any other discussion?
And, you know, I agree exactly what Mitch just said, and I know Don was out there, I believe, last week and said you were operating without a business license. You need to shut it down. We asked if we'd go out there after a study session Tuesday, but Commissioner Benwin went out there, and you were open. And there's blatant right against the city right there, so, I mean, if we approved this special use permit, and if the city official goes out there, and I'm sure somewhere down the line, one of the city officials will not sign off on that, and you won't get a business license, so, I mean, it's, it's a fair warning.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
We have five votes in favor, one nay, and the motion is approved. Thank you. Item number 10, PCN 12025, Nevada Generation Systems American Power Solutions.
Karen Melby, Senior Planner.
We're now focused on you.
Yeah. Sorry.
We're seeing how quickly Doug was going to catch up with us.
This is a special use permit to allow Nevada Generator to, to operate a gen, engine generator distribution facility located at 1939 Frazier, which is this property right here on the south side of Frazier. The primary use would be warehousing of the generator sets and also parts, including, and then also their administrative, you know, clerical business operations. This property is with the transition overlay and does, and zoned industrial with the transition overlay, which requires a special use for, for any new uses. Griffith Electric had been located on this property since 1986. However, in December of 2009, they vacated the property, so that exceeds the two years. And so Nevada Generator, when they wanted to occupy this property, had come in for a special use permit. They anticipate there'll be a limited, limited amount of service work done onsite. Most of it is at the customer's site on their, their generators, and there will be some coverage stor, storage on the property. One of the, I don't know if you'd say issues, but one of the concerns staff had was there are, there is a home that is occupied just east of this property, and then there's two homes across the alley to the south of this property. So the staff added some conditions for operations that they cannot operate their generators in the evenings, late out into the evenings, and that they must be operated, all operations must occur inside the buildings, not to disturb the existing residents in the area. We did receive a, a letter from one of the neighboring property owners, and he's here tonight, so I'll let him talk about that letter. I think I forwarded the photographs and emails to everyone, but Jim Galloway is here tonight, so I'll let him address that. Staff is recommending approval with nine conditions. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions by the Planning Commission for Karen?
Do we have now?
I was going to...
Yes, he's here also.
Yeah, I would rather ask a question, so...
Is the applicant available? Would you like to come forward and give us a quick presentation, please?
Hi, my name's Dave Bardelli. I'm president of Nevada Generator. And we've been in business and business since Nevada Generator's been in business since the mid-1970s in Spark, formerly located at 1520 Glendale Avenue. We've somewhat outgrown that facility. I've owned the business for the past since 2001. We've outgrown the facility at 1520, and I've had a local realtor keeping his eye out for a possible, you know, better location for us. And, oh, in January, he came to me and he said, "Dave, I think I might have found something for you." I said, "Great, let's go look at it." And actually, the property was ideal for, for our use. So I went ahead and leased the property in, well, my lease would have taken effect in April. So early March, I, we were preparing, ready to move, so I, we notified the City of Sparks that we would be considering moving from 1520 Glendale to 1939 Frazier, and we anticipated the move to be sometime around the first of April. We were told, I sent them a, told to send them a fax confirming that, confirming our conversation, which I did. And we began moving our operation to the Frazier facility, oh, in mid-March, and by mid-April, we were pretty much set, set to go there. During this transition, a fire department, building department, whoever normally comes and inspects us, came and inspected us and that. And then, I guess... Karen, it was in May that I was advised about the special use permit? In May, we got a notification that, oh, gosh, you need a special use permit here. Okay, well, you know, what are we doing? And, and I spoke to, to Ms. Melby, and, you know, she was quite helpful, and kind of directed me in the right direction, and we got, had a little problem getting hold of Mr. Griffith, the owner of the property. So I almost missed this date to get this application, but fortunately, you know, with, with some help and understanding, it, it went through. So anyhow, that's where we are. We're, we're, we've been operating there since, full-time since, since May. And I've just been trying to, this, this special use permit thing came as kind of a surprise to me, and, you know, perhaps I or my realtor should have done a little, done a little due diligence in the thing, but it's kind of the last thing on our mind, that, gosh, you need a special use permit in an industrial area, so there we are.
Questions? Yeah, I do. What is the largest generator that, that you store there?
That we would have at that facility? We can't handle anything at that facility, say, over 200 kilowatts, which would be a generator with the base of approximately eight feet by four feet. And we're, we're not equipped to handle anything there larger than that. And the generators we, we work on at the facility are usually small home standby, industrial, commercial, portable standbys. Or we do have some of our smaller residential generator sets delivered to our location, and from there, we'll truck it to the, to the customer.
Who is the customer? Individual or...
Individual, municipalities, industrial projects, anything.
Do you work on those there in the yard on some of these? There are some discussions here, whether you did or didn't, or...
We have a shop area, we have a...
Right. The shop.
And a shop area. However, we do sometimes work on generators outside. Specifically, if, if somebody brings a motorhome in, it's, it's rather difficult to...
To get them inside.
To bring in...
Occasionally, you have to have to...
Occasionally, we, yes, we do work outside.
In, in the, there is, I'm thinking, the noise. We're looking at this condition. What, what hours do you actually work?
Seven AM to, the shop is usually closed at 4:00 PM.
Okay. So, you know, right now, we've got a condition that's talking until 10:00 PM, and I was wondering if you needed that full 10:00 PM?
Not really.
And whether we could maybe, you know, with a house near there, working outside after five or something, you know?
No, I mean, we certainly, we certainly want to be a good neighbor. As a, as a matter of fact, the other day, the Marine, we do business with the Marine Corps, they brought a bunch of generators in, and they were load testing them out in the yard, and they were actually close to the fence over there.
And you told them that...
And I said, "Oh, jeez, I hope nobody's home."
Right.
And it was in the early afternoon, I didn't see a car. But I, actually, I spoke to the guys and said, "Hey, you know, at the very least, if you have to run these things, do it on the other side of the yard where there's..."
Where there's less noise.
"A vacant lot." You know, just being a good neighbor.
So it's nothing after a five or something that you need those hours?
Unless there's a, you know, a big emergency or something that, you know, something has to be done in the middle of the night. No, no.
Okay. I, I think I hear you saying, even though it's not often, that, that you don't meet the conditions of approval for item eight. The applicant shall conduct no work on generators or any operations outside of the existing building?
These are what are put in these conditions.
Okay.
Right now, at this point, we're asking...
Right. No, if, if, we, we can work in the existing building, except, as I said, for, if it's a motorhome, sometimes it, it actually be, might be more convenient to work on a generator in the yard, but it, it's not essential.
Well, I think as it stands right now, unless you wish to appeal to the staff on condition eight, you are, you, we are approving it with the idea that there will, is no work done, done outside.
Okay.
See, and I wouldn't be against occasionally having, you know, allowing them to do certain work on the thing, but the way the condition is written right now... work on the thing, but the way the condition is written right now, you can see where we're sitting with it.
Yeah, you know, I see that. It would be, it would be easier for us if naturally, if that condition were modified somewhat, to allow some limited work outside. But...
And we can talk to Karen and...
Okay. And the, obviously, with maybe a little less, more from lack of knowledge about the situation than intent, but you have the same situation that our previous applicant did, in that you are open for business without a special use permit at the moment.
Right.
And so... Mr. Thornley, do you have any?
Well, I'm in a bit of a spot on this one. So, no, I have nothing to add. You've heard my spiel.
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
Unlike the previous case with Scott Peterson there, with his operation, there is potential of life safety issues. If you look at the conditions that are in the staff report, none of them are conditions that would actually require for him to do anything. These are operating conditions. And so that's one of the difference in his favor, in the fact that he is not, it's not correct that he's being unoperating right now. But he is not in a life safety issue potentially that Scott Peterson is in. This, I mean, all of his conditions are regulations on how he runs his operation, and not anything that he has to do improvements to the site. So in his defense, that's one thing, but, I mean, he should not be operating right now until he does have a special use permit.
Karen, also on condition number eight, how can we modify or amend that to read that if a, you know, trailer does come in or a bus or something that he needs to work on that, you know, obviously, you can't bring it in the building, an RV, you'd have to work on it outside.
I mean, I guess we could add something to the, on the condition, except for the, I mean, would it be vehicles?
A vehicle or, you know, something perhaps on a trailer that couldn't be...
Moved into your building, yeah.
Brought in, physically brought into the, into the building or the ware, or the warehouse. And, you know, even, even with that condition, we could, you know, as I said, we want to be a good neighbor to people, and if we need to work on something outside, we could always work on it. It's far away from any, there's a vacant lot on the other side of the building, so it's...
But that may not be vacant forever. It will definitely not be residential ever, though.
Right.
So anytime that lot would be built, it would be an industrial.
The only thing, you know, I could foresee if something is physically too large to be brought into the shop, that...
The hard part for code enforcement on something like that is we get into a gray area of how do we define what's too large? So that creates a problem for code enforcement and frequency, and how often is this situation happening? So, I mean, that's where it becomes a problem for code enforcement.
Could I oppose that, you know, a little bit more on the condition, this is actually quite a bit more level one? And it just clears up that area in terms of the gray, and we just simply limit any outdoor operations to the, say, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM. And that way, you're not, you're not, you know, you're not doing any of those repairs outside of those normal business hours. Anything other than normal, that, that, that would be more than, more than we need. But, yes, thank you.
And that's in addition to condition eight?
Replacing condition eight?
In place of...
Just eliminating of eight. No, what he's suggesting is that any outdoor, any work conducted outside would be conducted between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Oh, okay, and at least nine as well.
During normal business hours, that, yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing item, so open it, a public hearing. Any member of the public who'd like to come forward and speak?
Thank you, Jim Galloway, and I wish Karen had talked about it a little, because three minutes is tough to me, but I'll show you a little site plan. This is my property adjacent to, adjacent to the subject property. He's here. And you see that there's a three-foot fire lane on my property, which apparently was a condition of a special use permit when that property first was developed for our construction company. So I apparently have and maintain 395 feet of wooden fence, virtually completely surrounds the property, except in the front where there's a metal gate and a smaller wall in front of the residence, which is still occupied as grandfathered residency. So the problem I have experienced over the years isn't a matter of Dave here, who, by himself, it's a historic problem with this property over here, which apparently never was required to have a fence. And as you can see, because there's a three-foot fire lane that I maintain, there's nothing, no possible operation on my property, even when I did have commercial tenants on it, that could possibly damage the fence. But I've continually experienced damage to the fence. Things on the other side of the property, which is now the generator property, drive into the fence. You can see it right there. And I asked Karen to come look at it. I'm sorry, I opened this thing a few days ago, like, two days ago. Wrote the email, "Karen, can you come with your camera, take a few shots, at least witness?" So here's my amateur photo. And here's where this bulge is. This is what's on the other side of the bulge, which is a large, a large truck, which I, the first time I noticed the bulge was, was a couple of weeks ago, that truck was not facing this way, it had backed into the fence area. And I'm sure that a lot of times, if somebody does that, they don't tell the boss even. Now, this, this fence is a patchwork. It's held up by, by, by a pipe driven into the ground. You can see where the bases have been broken off. This is a pipe. This is a pipe holding up the, the broken base. There are, there are holes, and there are replaced slats, which I did when the last guy moved out, because Griffith had a guy, he let him use it for storage, contractor, storing forearms, and they made a lot of noise, by the way, moving their stuff in and out and cleaning it with a power pressure washer and everything else. That was a problem. But this, so far, I haven't experienced a noise problem here with this tenant. What I'm concerned about is, I think something was missed in a previous special use permit. If I'm, if I can't possibly damage this fence, 140 feet of it, why am I suffering the financial hardship of fixing these damages? And if I do want to say, "Hey, Dave or anybody in there, I think your guys damaged the fence", we always have this issue of, do they admit it? Can you prove it? When did it happen? So, so I'm, I'm just thinking, why not, why shouldn't the tenant who, I don't even get to use all of my property, I can't use this three feet. Why can't, shouldn't the guy who can go right up to the fence and park his vehicles there and store his stuff be responsible for maintaining a fence that could be damaged if things are backed into it, if things are improperly leaned against it, if things, as has happened with Griffith Electric, a piece of conduits gets shoved through the fence by a forklift? When the forklift goes to pick up the piece of conduit, it misses, oops, here goes, here goes a two-inch diameter pipe right through my fence. So, you know, I've been absorbing this, but I thought, well, look, here's a special use permit. Apparently, my fence was a condition of a special use permit so that I wouldn't bother this neighbor or these neighbors up here. Okay, why couldn't we have a condition on this special use permit where Mr. Griffith, the property owner, or works it out with Dave somehow, within some reasonable period of time, takes over the responsibility for the fence and the maintenance of the fence? Give them a year. I mean, I would prefer that they put in a reinforced concrete wall for the first five feet, because then you'd really know if you hit it. But whatever it is, I would like to be able to say, "Hey, you know, that's, that is what these special use permits were originally for, and, and as long as you're getting a special use permit, maybe we could take this opportunity to solve a historic problem, because I don't want to get in fights with future or present tenants, or did your guy admit that he backed into my fence?" But this thing is kind of on its last legs, somebody's going to have to replace it soon anyway, and I just really don't feel, since it's absolutely impossible, that I should be the one to do it.
Thank you. Yeah, questions, yes.
He has Jim a question, please. Jim, I'm sorry, I did not get a chance to go drive by, because I broke my foot, and I haven't been able to get out.
That's not enough experience.
Karen came over, you could ask her what she saw.
She's a real excuses type. But is that, is your property residential, or is it a commercial use?
Actually, I went through a process and had it zoned industrial, several, you see, it's a jigsaw puzzle over there.
Right.
Some properties I found were already zoned in full industrial. So I paid my $1,000 last year, and I got this one thanks to you guys. But it is, but unfortunately, the only thing I've been able to maintain in rental in this bad economy is the grandfathered residence, which at least, thank goodness, gives me enough money to pay the tax.
So there is somebody living in there?
Yes. And, and the fortunate thing is that the houses are pretty well insulated, because this is in the flight path. So I have not had complaints from my tenant about Dave or his operation, and I don't have any problem with his operation and the condition that you now just put on it. Maybe he should go from 7:00 to 7:00 for all operations, but I'm not going to be picky about that. I'm just thinking, what do we, you know, I was required to build a, I mean, the previous guy was required to build a wood-faced fence. Why, I don't know. And they don't hold up really well when they're getting hit.
Right.
And they don't, and sometimes people don't even know that they've hit them. And so I was thinking, could you add a condition or recommend or craft a condition that would address this problem, and I don't have to have it solved tomorrow, but here's an opportunity to fix something that probably should have been in condition on Griffith Electric when they first started operating, to have a wall that would, because they intended to go right up to the property land with their storage and their operations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to come back and respond?
As I was just telling Karen, I thought I was supposed to maintain my fence anyhow. So naturally, you know, if we, if we damage anything, we'll, we'll maintain it, and I have no issue at all with what you're saying. It makes perfect sense to me.
When this issue came forward, my concern with us doing anything formally as part of this condition is that we're, we're sort of getting in the middle between an owner and a tenant.
Right.
And really, the negotiations of what, I mean, you might ultimately pay, but the negotiations of, of, you know, who does what and during what timeframe is, is, should be negotiations between the two owners of the property, I would think, as opposed to a person applying for a special use permit to have an operation there. Does anyone else feel differently about that?
No, I feel the same. Might be advisable to where, where your trucks parked, though, is maybe get some bumper blocks.
Yeah.
You know, so they can't back up the fence.
So, yeah, and as I said, I mean, it's only being a good neighbor, if you damage the fence, you fix the fence. So, and as I said, I thought that was probably our fence anyhow that I had to worry about, but...
Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Am I allowed a second? He's asking me to respond, and I...
We'll call you back up.
Okay. So, no, I have, I have no issue at all with what Jim is saying.
Would you have no issue at all with repairing or maintaining it, but, but our issue is whether that ought to be a condition of approval for a special use permit, it seems to me?
Sure. Okay. Thanks.
Jim, would you like to come back up?
And then I'd love to hear what Arvando has to say.
Well, I didn't know Dave. In fact, I didn't even know about this hearing until two days ago.
Well, he seems like a very nice guy.
So we had no opportunity to discuss, to discuss what might actually be more of an owner's responsibility for the property. But had the owner been, issued his special use permit in the same manner that the one was issued for my property, there, there wouldn't have been a problem at all to begin with, because it would have been a condition of his special use permit, and the wall would have been built by Griffith Electric ages ago, and it would probably be a lot sturdier wall than what I have. So that was my point. I think that something was missed, and do you have the ability? And all, every condition you place, by the way, comes between, between separate parties, even if it's hours of operation, every condition you place on anything. So I was hoping maybe, you know, maybe Dave shouldn't be the one to do this. Maybe it should be the owner of the property next door. If it's a condition, he would have to do it in order to rent the property. If I try to work it out, I'll just tell you from experience, we, I will historically have for the next 20 years, the same problems I've had. My guys didn't do it, it was pre-existing condition, it isn't any worse today than it was, you know.
But I think our gray lines are out there.
Yes, in fact, I'm going to, thank you, Jim. I'm going to call a recess of the Planning Commission until staff returns.
Okay.
Let them come up with some ideas.
I was hoping that they would come up with an idea. And I don't think that should all be one on Dave.
Hopefully, they will.
All right, so we're in recess for a while. And I'll say, a special use... And I'll say, special use. Let's get the meeting back going again. Does staff have some ideas for us?
Chairman Bowles, frankly, we believe that actually Mr. Galloway is no longer required to maintain the fence on his property. He's no longer operating under a special use permit after he has had his property rezoned. So frankly, Mr. Galloway is free to remove the fence on his side of the property. If one or both of the property owners want to install a fence and maintain a fence, they are free to do that. Nevada Generator may want a fence there if Mr. Galloway chooses to remove his. We would, we don't believe that the planning commission can require as a condition of the permit that Nevada Generator replace the fence that's actually on Mr. Galloway's property. If alternatively, the planning commission really wants to require a fence in this case, we would recommend that, or we would say that the fence has to be, the requirement for a fence would have to be on the applicant's property. But frankly, we would advise against that condition altogether. So I think you have some options there. At the end of the day, we tend to view this as an issue between two property owners, and since Mr. Galloway is no longer required to maintain the fence on his property, if he doesn't want to, if he doesn't want to have to keep that expense up, then he's free to take it down.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question then?
Absolutely.
Sometimes I just don't get things. So he doesn't have to keep up the special use permit because he's not operating the business? Is that correct?
That property is no longer operating under a special use permit. He has had it rezoned and the residential use is frankly a non-conforming use, a legal non-conforming use on that property.
Okay.
So if we take your advice, Armando, we would not be changing any conditions other than the condition eight that we changed initially.
Can I have where you, if everybody wants to see that, suggested?
Sure. Yes, please.
Whoops. I guess I have to move. What I was suggesting is that the applicant may conduct any operations outside of the existing building during the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
So that's adjusted condition eight.
Eight.
All right, any other questions by any other member of the planning commission? For the applicant, Karen, anyone else? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring you back. I think I did that twice, actually. But crisis is better than not at all.
It's safe.
Exactly, it's safe.
Mr. Chair, are you prepared for a motion?
I am, yes.
Okay, I'm going to give this a try. Just, okay. So, actually, maybe I wasn't ready to give this a try. Oh, I'm so embarrassed, I'm sorry. Here it is, right here. Okay. I move to approve special use permit associated with PCN 12025, adopting findings S1 through S6 and the fact supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to conditions of approval 1 through 9 as listed in the staff report, with the changes in the wording to condition 8. And that's it.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Yes.
I just, the only discussion would be is I just sure hope we can be nice neighbors and get along and.
I don't think that'll be a problem.
Okay.
Very good. Good to hear.
Yeah, I don't.
That's great.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
I bet they'll become friends. Yeah, yeah.
All right, we have item number 11, PCN 12026, City of Sparks.
Jim Rundell, senior planner, here to make a presentation on the request from the City of Sparks.
Fellas, if you're going to have a discussion, could you have it outside the meeting room? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Real quick background on this, some of the planning commissioners have been here, some are newer, but approximately year 2002 regional plan, the cities in unincorporated Washoe County planning jurisdictions approved through the regional plan a concept of doing transit-oriented development. The Reno corridor extended along Virginia Street and Fourth Street, and the Prater and Sparks corridor extended along Prater and Victorian. As time progressed, the City of Sparks refined the transit-oriented development corridor and ultimately constructed a new master plan, which the planning commission approved, that was accompanied with interim transit-oriented development zoning and design standards. Soon after that, the planning commission and city council approved what we called the final TOD standards, and those are what are in place currently. As the planning commission has been aware through workshops, through stakeholder meetings, and briefs from city council meetings, as well as some of the regional planning commissioners attending regional planning commission meetings, there has been some concern over the number of acres, for example, that are in the transit-oriented development corridor in both of the two jurisdictions that have TOD in the Truckee Meadows. The City of Sparks has identified an area generally east of Sparks Boulevard, south of Prater, north of Interstate 80, and I'm going to say west of Solomon Circle, that used to be zoned, for the most part, industrial and is currently zoned TOD with the employment designation. Most of the uses that are in that area and most of the buildings in that area, in staff's opinion, could be rezoned back to industrial, some C2 and some tourist commercial, without creating non-conforming uses or substandard developments. This will reduce the size of the TOD by approximately 20%, 25%. I have a map that I'd like to point out that depicts the area that I just described. As I explained, primarily, the area has been master planned TOD employment. A portion of it has been master planned TOD mixed commercial, and that's the pink area. Staff is proposing this land use map. The red here is on the intersection of Lincoln and Sparks Boulevard, and it represents the Wild Island block, as well as two industrial buildings that are over there. One of them has gymnastics use within the building. There is a tourist commercial. Staff has proposed a tourist commercial designation along the freeway that would accommodate the hotel use that is currently there. Next to the tourist commercial, staff has proposed general commercial, and that would essentially accommodate the fast food restaurants and service, I guess not a service station anymore, a gas station that is there. To the north, along Prater Way, staff is proposing the majority of that go back to professional office, which is what it, most of it was prior to being rezoned and remaster planned to transit-oriented development. That would include the hospital and the facilities in proximity to the hospital. On this map here, and these are included in your staff report, I would like to point out, this is the existing zoning, and the parcels have been, they're zoned, or colored gray to depict which parcels were rezoned to TOD. I want to point out, the parcel here at the intersection of Prater Way and Sparks Boulevard used to, is a planned development, and that parcel was not rezoned when we did the TOD rezoning. The parcel across the street from it, across Lillard, is the police department, and that facility was zoned professional, public facility, and was also not rezoned when we did the TOD. Another parcel that was not rezoned at the time was the Gandolfo Arena and the park up there on the hill. Therefore, staff is proposing that zoning looks something like that, and it essentially mimics what the master plan proposal was. We are proposing, though, to remaster plan the old, with City Works, that'll make it more familiar to the planning commission, and to remaster plan it back to industrial because it is currently master planned employment TOD. The planning commission should have received some sheets that depict zoning permitted uses in the area. As a planning commission can imagine, one of staff's primary concerns was that we did not create non-conforming uses, substandard developments, or take any property rights from the existing property owners. And we have done an analysis on these properties to make our best attempt to ensure we were allowing a number of uses going forward into the future. This sheet here is the TOD employment uses, and then in the right-hand column, it's the zoning code, industrial uses with locational requirements. That's the one I'm looking at right now. Looks like it doesn't zoom in very well on the overhead. But that, the reason I'd like to point that one out is to accommodate Mr. Rupert that has attended as one of the property owners. He also attended the neighborhood meeting that I, that we, that City of Sparks conducted last week, as reflected in your staff report. One of his concerns was that he was losing the ability to do restricted gaming if his site was rezoned from TOD to industrial. His property is with, is here, it is within a 600-foot, it is within the 600-foot locational requirement of Sparks Boulevard, which then allows for commercial uses, as well as the industrial uses. And that is, to make it familiar to the planning commission, how certain recreational uses are allowed in the industrial, if they're all within 600 feet of Glendale or Greg Street. Retail, restaurant, certain uses are allowed if you're within major arterials of, with an industrial zoning. At the neighborhood meeting, his concern was, would he be able to do restricted gaming? Restricted gaming is typically less than 15 or 14 slot machines, 15 or fewer slot machines. Doesn't allow for table games. But if you're operating a restaurant or a bar, and you have the poker machines in the bar or some slot machines, that would be permitted as an accessory use. And I wanted to say that on the record for him. That is what the letter is from Michael Pony that you all received is requesting affirmation of, and that's what I wanted to explain. The planning commission has received an analysis of professional office, C2, tourist commercial, and the industrial, standard industrial and industrial, that's within the 600 feet of Sparks Boulevard. The analysis has been done to show what uses are permitted under the TOD employment designation, and what would be permitted if they are rezoned as proposed on this, with this application. There's a significant amount of stuff to go, of information to go over, and I think I'll leave it to your questions coming in.
Thank you. Questions for Jim? I was given this note with a note to read into the record, the letter that you've made reference to. I think the other planning commissioners haven't seen this letter. So do.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you just get?
Just got one.
I'm sorry, I thought all the planning commissioners had received.
Just got this.
This is a letter which I can read in its entirety if I should be doing it. Mr. Attorney?
I don't.
All right. Jim made reference to it, and I think answered the questions that the attorneys were asking here.
Yes, let's just make sure we include Mr. Pony's letter in the official record.
In summary, Commissioner, or Chairman Bowles, the letter says that they, that Mr. Pony supports the rezoning, the remaster planning, and based on what staff had told him, if they ever wanted to use restricted gaming as an accessory use to, say, retail or a bar at that site, they would be able to, and I agree with that, that they would be able to.
Thank you.
So you want this in?
Yes, there's letters coming down. Any other questions for Jim? Thank you, Jim. Lot of work and some really interesting reading, which we don't have time to go through, but it was interesting reading and you did a good job. I'm sure that we'll all find little nicks and knacks that we need to change, but you did good work.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing item. Any, I will open the public hearing. Anyone in the public would like to come forward and speak?
Evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Dick Rupert. I'm property owner at the corner of Boxington and Lincoln Wyatt. And we've been through this process a couple of times with Jim, and he's been very helpful in working with us. And we're not here to object to anything. All we wanted to do is get a clarification of the uses that we would be permitted going forward under the industrial zoning. And I think we've satisfied that.
Okay.
So unless you've got questions, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Giving us that information. Any other members of the public like to speak? Seeing none, bring it back to the planning commission. Any additional questions for Jim? Jim, or Doug Turnley, I assume, I'm assuming from the suggested motions here that we need three separate motions.
That's right.
With three separate votes, is that correct?
Yep.
I will entertain one, the first motion then on the master plan agreement, if someone's prepared to do that.
I'll be happy to do it.
All right.
I move to adopt Resolution 196, amending the Sparks Master Plan and forwarding a recommendation of certification for the master plan amendment associated with PCN 12026 to the city council to change the boundary of the TOD corridor, remove the TOD employment designation, remove all standards properly related thereto, and change the land use designation for all the land with the TOD employment designation to 352 acres of industrial. 61 acres of office professional, 46 acres of public facility, 30 acres of tourist commercial, and four acres of general commercial by adopting findings MP1 through MP4 and the fact supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second. You're playing hurt and did well. We have a motion and a second on the master plan amendment. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I will accept a motion concerning rezoning.
Mr. Chairman? I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of the rezoning requests associated with PCN 12062 to rezone 88 parcels totaling approximately 472 acres from TOD employment and TOD mixed use commercial to 331 acres of I industrial, 51 acres of PO for. P O professional office, 46 acres of P F public facility, 30 acres of T C tourist commercial, and four acres of C2 general commercial, based on the findings Z1 through Z3 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the issue of rezoning PCN 12062. Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. I will accept a motion on the code amendment issue.
Can I make a motion here?
You may.
I'll do the little one here.
You made the lady who's playing hurt.
I know, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of code amendment associated with CA 3-12.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the code amendment issue. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
That was a lot of work.
Wow, that's a run-in center.
We are on item number 12, general business, public comment, item 12. Any member of the public wishes to speak for three minutes on...
No, we're over.
Any issues?
No more.
No more, it sounds like. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and bring it back. Are there any comments from the commissioners? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Move to approve. We urge you...
Move to adjourn, whichever you want. Yeah, but that's...
Thanks.